Located on the west side of Landmark Drive, 700 feet south of Atlanta Highway from an Ag 1 to a V2 district.
Right, Mr. Genright is not here. I have been in opposition against him, so he comes in at 5 o'clock hour. We'll take his recommendation.
Okay. Item four, ordinance authorizing mayor to execute aggregate contracts of 25,000 or less without council review and approval for September 2025.
All right, Mrs. Smansky.
I got a substitution while doing the regular session.
Okay.
Item five, 30-day review of Sherwood Apartments, 4921 Haven Avenue.
Um, Ms. Bladok and President Calhoun, um, their representative's not going to come today. He's not going to show up for those apartments.
Mike, I said they can't hear.
Can you hear me? You guys got it speaking to your mic. Thank you. Ms. Riley?
Yes, President Calhoun and Ms. Bladok, um, the representative is not going to be able to come for those apartments today, and I know the owners are not coming in. Can we carry that one over, um, Mr. President?
Oh, will the council? Yes, I'm fine with that.
Item six, 30-day review of Brittany Gilchrist, Doing Businesses, Crown Legacy Studio and Art at 3834 Harrison Road.
Mrs. Smansky? Okay, all right.
Item seven, resolution authorizing agreement between MPS and City of Montgomery supporting MPS Middle School Athletics Program.
All right, council, uh, we carried that over two weeks ago. Mr. Genright put it on, and we carried it over, talking about the, uh, sponsorship of the, uh, middle school, which used to be the junior high school athletic program. Uh, the terms are in the, uh, ordinance, and we're gonna ask for a vote up or down on that at the 5 o'clock meeting.
Item eight, reconsideration of Resolution Number 123-2024, application for a towing company, uh, Doing Businesses, D&amp;D Towing and Recovery, 23 West Patton Avenue.
Ms. Riley?
Mr. Calhoun, um, we'll do that in 5 o'clock session. They supposed to come.
Item nine, ordinance regulating parking of commercial vehicles on residential property, option one.
Ms. Riley?
Okay, Mr. President, um, I have these ordinance that we were looking at about this parking, and, um, I have some examples of some trucks and some, uh, pictures I'm gonna let you all look at about how these people are parking vehicles and where they're parking them at, and why we're getting so many calls and people calling from everywhere about trucks being parked on the side of the road, tow trucks being on the side of the road, and they cannot see, leaving out of their, um, areas of their neighborhoods and how they're tearing up the streets. So that's one reason why I wanted us to look back at these ordinance to see what we need to do to get these ordinance enforced on all of these trucks that are being in these residential neighborhoods that shouldn't be in the residential neighborhoods.
All right, and council?
Mr. President.
Mr. Mitchell?
I, I'm trying to understand. I thought we had an ordinance on the book addressing those semi-trucks, um, being parked in, in, in neighborhoods on, on public streets. Um, I think it, the gray areas when they park in their driveway, and I guess when they park in their driveway, they come in, um, moving on the street, then when they move on the street, they put it back in the driveway. So I guess my thing is, do we not already have an ordinance on the books addressing those particular commercial vehicles, Stacy?
Yes, I can, Mr. Mitchell?
Yes, it's an ordinance on the book. The thing of it is, they're not abiding by the ordinance, and no one is forcing the ordinance. That's why we have to look at the ordinance to see what we need to do to help get it done. And they're not just parking, they're not just parking on, in the driveway and pulling out. They're parking on the street in front of churches and blocking interestways, in front of people's houses and everything, and that's why I have pictures of different stuff that people have sent in on it. So that's why I want to kind of let you understand and see that we have an ordinance, but we got to figure out what we're gonna do to help our communities, because the ordinance are not being enforced at all.
So, Mr. President? Mr. Mitchell?
Now, we, we only can create, but when it comes to enforcement, we, we don't, that would be a conversation goes back to almost the day to, the day-to-day operation of the city. So I guess my, my question is, we can create them, and we can, but we can't enforce them. So I guess my question is, what are we trying to do with this particular ordinance? Because we cannot enforce it. That'd be a question. We can put it on the books all day, every day.
Mr. President?
Ms. Riley?
The words were, what can we do to help enforce the ordinance?
Not really nothing from a council standpoint on the enforcement part. It even don't have to be the housing code, which we do not control, of MPD if they're violating those things. So that's what I spoke about two weeks ago. We can create the ordinance, you know, just like I can create, we got laws about running red lights and stop signs. But if nobody's stopping, you know, the council, the law is already on the books, and we've done our job. So the enforcement part comes from the people that we, housing code, and I don't see anyone from housing code coming up here to address this issue, or from the MPD department to address that. The council makes the laws, but we don't enforce those laws. So creating another ordinance, and I got some calls too from some situations, from the power company utilities with their trucks going in, when people have to act, how do we react to that? So, you know, I know what your intent is, and your intent is fine, but, you know, it's the, on the consequences that we might involve, because we can put it out there right now, and if nothing is happening now, and changing the ordinance, there's nothing gonna happen. So, Mr. Mr., Ed, you want to speak on behalf of someone from those departments, want to address this?
I don't want to speak on behalf, but I'll definitely get that information back to them.
Okay, well, we need to have that information at the 5 o'clock hour. So if anybody's listening at this from MPD and, and the inspection department, we need the housing code enforcement, we need to have these answers, because I understand what Ms. Riley's saying and everybody's, we're getting the calls, but we don't write the tickets, or we don't tow the trucks. So that's what we need to get answers from. Thank you. Mr. Mitchell, you know, what else have anything on that?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Item 10 is just option two of that one. Item 11 has been withdrawn. Item 12, resolution setting a show cause hearing for November the 5th, Four Club Gs, 1187 West South Boulevard, as to why the business license should not be revoked.
Ms. Bladok?
Yes, sir.
Item number 11?
Has been withdrawn.
Who withdrew?
The city, the, um, I was told that there were some tweaks that needed to be done to it, that it was not ready for adoption.
So let's, let's go back to what we talked, uh, a month ago. It's on the agenda. No one up here knew anything about it. So now it comes on the agenda. We ready to address it, and now it's been withdrawn. So I ask again, if anything is gonna get on the agenda, it needs to have a council sponsorship, or it needs to come through the council president and Ms. Ms. Bladok's office, because we gonna stop getting blind, yeah, I knew it was there, but I didn't know it was being withdrawn. No, 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 no. It's already a resolution. It's already council rules.
Yeah, we just need to enforce it.
Yeah, you just want to enforce that.
Mr. President, that's it?
Yeah, that's it. And, you know, and we gonna, we gonna, we gonna stop these blind side, and we getting caught by, because I was ready to move on this, because what we're trying to do with this ordinance, if it's not correct when it gets there, we need to have that done before we get to Tuesday at 4 o'clock. So that, that's how we're gonna work going forward.
Well, we received communications from the Chamber of Commerce Friday that we, we were, we received different communications from different people, but at the end of the day, somebody sent me the law. I went back, I read it. It says that their board, the TID board, has to take action before we can pass our resolution.
Okay.
So, and, and, and Councilman Calhoun, you may have, or, Mr. President, you may have been copied on the emails, um, and, and I know we're all inundated with the emails, but the communication back to the group was that until the board takes action, we can't take action, because if we take action before they do, then it could be nullified.
Okay. You know, this is about collection of money, so, you know, I want to get this action done, okay?
I agree.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Stacy. Thank you for your legal advice today. All right, now we can go on.
I read item 12, so that's before the council.
All right, Ms. Riley?
Um, we'll address it in the 5 o'clock hour. They supposed to be here.
All right.
Okay, now, no discussion is supposed to be done at this meeting. It's supposed to be at the show cause, November the 5th.
Okay, so we can do the discussion now? Okay. Um, what has happened, um?
You won't have any record of it in here, other than the video.
Well, can I, I would rather have it on record, because I want it on record, but I can also talk about it, um, because, uh, some witnesses are gonna come in on this, um, Mr. President, due to the fact that, um, a young lady did get seriously injured at this, this, this club environment area, and also that, I've talked to revenue, and they are behind on their taxes as well.
All right.
And the young lady did want to come forth and talk to the council about what happened.
Okay.
Item 13, resolution setting a show cause hearing for November the 5th, for Eschelon Grill, also known as Truth Barn Grill, 305 Air Base Boulevard.
Also, uh, Mr. President, on this incident, we had a serious, a very bad shootout that happened in front of that club a couple, um, the grill place a couple of weeks ago, and, uh, we had some business owners on that area that sent in several letters of complaints and concerns about what was going on over in that area with that, um, that bar and grill area. So we will talk about more at 5 o'clock. Uh, they also owe back taxes as well, and they're not, they're supposed to be here at 5.
Okay.
Item 14, application for an alternative transportation service, Doing Businesses, Barber and Associates, NEMT, at 2121 Marty Lane.
Mr. Mitchell?
Mr. President, I have no issues with this.
Okay.
15, application for a rental hall, Doing Businesses, Jamie Day LLC, 3447 McGee Road, Unit B.
Okay, we'll talk, I think that's the, um, uh, skating rink that's on the McGee Road that's already operating. They just trying to get, they rented it out anyway, so we'll, we'll address that in the, uh, 5 o'clock hour.
16, application for a rental hall, Brittany Gilchrist, Doing Businesses, Legacy Art and Dance Studio, 3834 Harrison Road.
Mrs. Smansky?
Yeah, Mr. President, there's just, just to kind of clarify a couple of things. There's been a couple of, um, I guess incidents that have happened in that shopping center. We've been kind of monitoring that. Um, you know, this is a commercial district that sits right on the border of District 7, and kind of sits near, uh, District 2 and 1, I believe. Uh, Ms. Beer and I have had conversations, and, uh, Julie, I was out of town last week, Julie communicated with the Forest Hills Homeowners Association president, and I believe that with some restrictions, we're gonna start out just to make sure that we've got the correct activities happening at this place. I'm gonna, um, ask that we put a limit on, uh, the time that they are open, uh, until, just to start. Bring them back in after a few months if we need to reevaluate that. Um, there have been some concerns about activities at the business next door, and, uh, that's something that may come up, but not at this meeting, um, tonight. So I just wanted to make sure that, uh, Ed's not, or Mr. Grimes isn't here, but Ms. Beer's here, that I just kind of put that out there. Uh, we'll be moving this one forward with a couple of restrictions. We can talk about it during the regular session.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I have one question. I think we have another one. Um, and I know you said it's not on here tonight. Um, the one that closed and was trying to get into location and what we passed a few weeks ago, and then she was saying she's within the 1.8 miles or not the 2 miles, and, you know, I know she was doing business prior to, but we were thinking about, can her license be transferred or grandfathered?
Well, it can't be, but one thing that we could do, well, unfortunately, what we did at the, at that meeting back, and I believe it was June, is, and I didn't realize, um, that I had to release it, we put it a hold on that, so I can take that hold off of it. But if we do that, we're gonna have neighboring event halls, which poses a big problem, and the, the property at the next door to Ms. Gilchrist, uh, the one that you're referencing, um, we've had some confusion about the activities that have been happening over there. There was a party there over the weekend, um, and so, but even so, 1.67 miles, now it's gonna be 0 miles because they're neighbors. So we're moving this one forward, and we won't be able to move the other one forward, because, uh, we did not remove the 2-mile requirement for event halls, I don't believe, so.
Now, uh, Mr. President, uh, Councilor, uh, Smansky, we did do the exception to, um, at the council's discretion in this last ordinance we passed, but can, can you go back for me? Are you saying that the Art and Dance Studio has a business license as an event center?
So the Art and Dance Studio is applying for, uh, a rental hall. Their name is Legacy Art and Dance Studio. They're on the agenda today, and so that is at, uh, 3834 Harrison Road. The other property is at, uh, 3836, but that one, and that again, I didn't realize that these, I had to release the hold that, the indefinite hold, I guess, but I have to do that and submit it to, uh, Ms. Bladok, and then we can evaluate whether or not we want to do. I guess we can do, uh, uh, an exemption and allow for two places to be potentially next door to each other. The only issue with that one right now is we're gonna have to have a conversation with the neighborhood on that one, because we have been having calls and some issues about activities that have been happening there.
At the Art and Dance?
No, at the one that's not on the agenda.
Oh, the one that's not?
Mr. President?
Ms. Beer?
Um, yes, the one that's located directly next to this, I think it's 3836, right, Mr. Smansky?
Correct.
Okay. And that one, if I'm correct, Ms. Brown, does not have a business license yet. So she's operating a business, if I'm getting this correct, without a business license? Is that correct?
Well, so, just to-
Ms. Brown, if you'll confirm that for me, so I can-
Okay.
So we can get that understanding.
Go ahead, Ms. Uh-
No, 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 she, she-
I'm sorry. I just want clarification.
That's the same one that he's talking about, the girl next door, that don't have a license?
So she just, she doesn't have a license, but she's operating and having her events without that business license. So all she has is a signature on a lease of the building?
Correct.
Okay.
She's came here many a times, wanting a license.
And so when you have somebody that is operating without a license that we know about, what, what do we do from, uh?
Well, I was gonna speak to Stacy about it, to make sure I was doing right before.
She's doing business, but the license is a whole.
So the woman business-
I'm talking about the one that's got a hole.
No, the one that-
I think I'm a one on hole. The one that's doing-
That's what I was trying to understand, what he's saying. The financial license. I know. They up here wearing footballs after the movie. And why would it be doing this? They get that in a proclamation.
And if, we're not gonna do it, so. I, we, we good?
Oh, oh, um-
Any questions?
She was telling, she was telling me, um, what I need to do. Uh, I can do a cease and desist, I can make her shut the business down, but I can't make her leave.
Yeah, that's fine. I just, that's fine. I just, the, the, the main thing is, is right now, even to move this thing forward, I have to release the hold on that business anyway. I can do that in writing to the clerk, and then it can come up for a license at a future date, but there's gonna have to be some discussions with the neighborhood before that moves forward, because there have been concerns about the activities there, and I think one of the things that we should just think about in the future is, is that if you are acting outside of, without having a license, then you apply for a license, what happens then, right? Doesn't matter if it's this business or if it's a ice cream shop, right?
Or a tow truck.
Or a tow truck, or a lawn business. If we know you're operating without a license, then you apply for a license, we just go, cool?
Okay, but you gotta have proof. I can't go up to them unless I got proof that they're doing this or that.
Well, right, but I'm saying is, we have the proof, and I'm saying in an example like this, we know people are, there have been activities there. We don't have to dive deep into it tonight, because I can't do anything about it tonight anyway, but it is something just for us to keep in mind, is, is that what do we do if we know? You just get a clean slate, because you decided to come get a, a business license, and so?
But, but, Mr. President?
Mr. Mitchell?
And I, and I guess at the end of the day, that's what you want them to do. You want them to, to get a license, 100%, you do want them to get a license, so we need to be encouraging those businesses that's not operating with a business license. Um, but we have to do a little more for, um, to, most of them, we can't do liens, because they're leasing the building, so we just have to find, uh, other means to really make them, um, get their license, and I guess that's the biggest issue we got to find out.
And Stacy, one thing I'd be really interested in would be what we can do, and I know this has come up briefly in the committee meeting, but what we can do with landlords? What, I, I know it's gonna be tou, I know, I know, I know it's gonna be tough, but is there something where if you have landlords that are allowing people to operate businesses without licenses, without the license that they're supposed to be operating under, what, what, what can we do? I'm not saying that we have to come up with something, but what, what could we potentially do to, because they're really the ones that would, in essence, be authorizing this, and they're only, the only ones that we can actually go after to try and fix this problem.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Ms. Beer?
Mr. Smansky?
Yes, ma'am.
So, on this number 16, you're, there's gonna be a, a potential for two people to be side by side.
Not, sorry, not to cut you off, but not, not, not tonight. Tonight, we're just voting on this.
I know, but-
Yeah.
We've got one that's operating right now without a business license.
Yeah, and we'll, that's why I'm saying-
So there's no taxes, no nothing. We're just, hey, every weekend, we're having a party. Okay. Just want to get a clear understanding of that.
All right, you have something for me, Ms. Bladok? Your mic off.
Your mic is off.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
I was just going to let Mr. Smansky know that, that, um, he will just have to make a motion to remove it from the table, and then by majority vote, it will be in front of the council.
Okay.
When you get ready for it to come forward. I just wanted to be aware of that.
So you did.
Item 17, application for a rental hall, Doing Businesses, Columns at Knott's Hall, 419 South Perry Street. And council, I'm gonna bring to your attention, I have to put in front of you a sheet, this gentleman is asking for a religious exemption for a liquor license.
Uh, yeah, Mr. President, I'm okay with it. And what he's saying is, he, he's not requesting a liquor license because of religious reasons, but I'm okay with it.
Okay.
Item number 18, application for retail beer and retail table wine, off premises only, Doing Businesses, Eastdale Food Mart, 4,000 Eastdale Circle.
Ms. Mitchell, go ahead, Ms. Mitchell.
Mr. President? Can we go back on?
17?
And, and I guess, are we gonna, let's just do, if we gonna do away with it, let's just do away with it and go ba, I mean, case by case, because we're amending and altering every time a different rental hall come up. I mean, we just, I think Ed put in place that if you do a rental hall, you have to apply for a alcohol license. Now we just saying that, you know, I, I understand religious reasons, but now we're saying that we're gonna exclude that and not, he doesn't have to apply, and that's what I say, should we just not go case by case, basis by basis, because we are changing every time a different rental hall center come up? I'd rather either vote it up or down, and we go on, instead of every time we, we doing amendments, or we are doing exceptions to the rules. And that's the only thing I asked Ms. Ms. Bladok and Mr. President and the council. And I, I, I'm fine with it. I think we just go up and down every time they come in front of us.
Okay. I think the president, what Mr. Mitchell is saying, you can say that I don't want to apply for a liquor license, and we grant you that right, and then you say, you, you authorize liquor to be in there. So that could be the loophole right there.
Right, right.
Okay.
I agree with you on that.
Thank you, Ms. Bladok. We can move on.
We're on item 18, which is off premise beer and wine license at Eastdale Food Mart.
Mr. Grimes? You cool with, yeah, number 18?
I'm looking at it. Uh, East Mart Food Mart.
It's a gas station?
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
All right, thank you, sir.
19, application for retail beer and retail table wine, off premises only, Doing Businesses, Quick Trip, 1, 1,060 Eastern Boulevard.
Mr. Grimes?
Fine.
Thank you, sir.
20, application for retail beer and retail table wine, off premises only, Doing Businesses, Chevron Food Mart, 2631 East South Boulevard.
We good with that one?
Item 21, application for retail beer and retail table wine, off premises only, Doing Businesses, 10 Day Date, and De Cion, you'll have to correct me, it's been a long time since I took Spanish, 4,460 Troy Highway.
Mr. Mitchell?
I'm, I'm okay with that.
All right.
22, resolution reappointing Cedric Campbell to the Architectural Review Board.
All right, we good with the rest of them? They all appointed? Any council have anything on that? Any council have anything before we get into the public communication?
Council, can I make you aware of, I put in front of you a form that I've drawn up for these rental halls and conference centers, that I'm gonna require them to fill out when they're making an application for a rental hall or a conference center. If y'all will just look at it and let me know if you want any tweaking done to that, I think this is gonna be the smoothest way to handle this, since now we have to have the building size and further information.
Okay. All right, we'll look at it, and we'll get back with you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Bladok. Any other council person? Number?
No, this is good. Thank you, Ms. Bladok.
I'm gonna introduce it now.
Uh-
I can. Go, you, you go ahead.
Yeah, I just had a quick question on this, and I don't know if we have, uh, um, I guess, if a fire marshal can answer the question, but it says, uh, one per 50 people, uniformed security guards for space, that's what, 1,500, 2,000, 4,000, is there a square footage that helps us determine occupancy? I know you kind of take into account tables and chairs, but I'd hate for us to have a major venue, let's say 8,000 square feet, that can fit 300 people, and then we've got to get, you know?
Uh, it's all done, um, pretty much case by case.
Case by case?
You go in there, measure the square footage, see the intent for the layout, and, uh, and the international fire code that we have adopted, we use the formulas that are in that book to see what that's what it looks like.
Okay. Mr. President, I don't know if you, if that kind of, if you understand, but like the, I, I don't want to make, I want to make sure that we're not asking for like, uh, you know, a rental venue that they have like nine uniformed security guards to do, you know, uh?
You going based on people and not square footage?
Well, it says, uniformed security guards, one per 50 people, but if you've got, you know, if you can have certain number of people for a larger venue, you're talking about a lot of certified security guards, and it might make, uh, events cost prohibitive to do that, you know, to have 10 or 12 armed security, or uniformed security guards that, uh?
There's limits on the square footage of the rental halls and the conference centers, if you look at the top. A rental hall can be 5,000 square feet or less.
And then the conference center 15 or more?
Or more, yes, sir.
The conference center can have the same activities.
It's on the ordinance that we passed.
Yes.
Okay.
So you don't want to amend that or stipulate?
Uh-uh, no, ma'am. This was on the ordinance, and we already went through this already, and we've been in three months in the meeting. This is, this is fine. Thank you, Ms. Bladok.
All right, keep the love going in the room. All right, in our work session roster, communication, Mr. Mitchell?
Mr. President, I have an ordinance that I want the council to look at. Um, right now, most of those, um, event centers, um, conference centers that we are speaking of can operate pretty much as they, as at wheel, um, almost 24 hours. So this, I want us to look at it, um, it put, stipulate the hours that they can operate for its opening and closing? So if you can please look at, um, I ask that we put it on, um, the next agenda for the next meeting.
Okay, you can't do this in this meeting.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Bladok.
All right. Speak with us in our work session roster, communication, uh, Ms. Anne Sykes, Montgomery Education Foundation, Bold Goals Initiative.
And, Mr. President, they do have it fixed where they can do the timing on the screen.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mr. Calhoun, um, city council, thank you, um, for the opportunity to speak for you this evening. You're receiving a one-page overview of a program called Bold Goals, and I want to take just a little bit of your time tonight to bring you up to date. It's been a long journey, and I see some smiles, and I see Mr. Mitchell- been a long journey, and I see some smiles, and I see Mr. Mitchell, and then behind me is Ron Simmons, and there's, there's lots of pieces of this effort that's been coming together over the past couple of years. And that's a good thing. It's a bad thing, it's taken two years, but it's a good thing, because we've carefully looked at how we do this work, what it will take, and make sure we secure the underpinnings so we can do it for a sustainable and effective amount of time. Bold Goals' goal is to, the big picture is to increase the third grade reading and also be mass proficiency. But that's the easy thing to say. How we get there is the tough part, but it doesn't have to be. We spend a lot of time saying schools do better, do better, but y'all, reading proficiency does not start in kindergarten, it starts day one, birth. We already have many, many resources available to us in our community that are doing great work, everything from Nurse Family Partnerships to HIPAA to, I mean, there's public health, there's a lot of resources to help families, make sure children get good starts and continued starts. But we need to make sure that we're preparing all students for school success and reducing inequities, um, looking at existing resources. Bold Goals is collective action where the entire community makes a commitment saying we're gonna reach this goal, whatever it takes. We're saying we can do it efficiently by aligning existing organizations, nonprofits, state, local, federal, um, resources that can bring the needs, um, that are to help children get a healthy start. That's everything from the programs I mentioned and many, many others. So this is about being efficient and also accounting for those efforts. We are able to establish baselines, be able to look where we are, find out the assessment of where we need to be. We spent two years now aligning a lot of coalition members that are the boots on the ground, so to speak. Um, those are, have been refreshed and also re-energized now so that we can come together with a plan to move forward, which we already have. I'm happy to say that Dawn Owens has, um, taken the position as director for Bold Goals. She has thirty years' experience, both local, state, and national recognition, and work, um, in early childhood. So we're standing side by side with our district to say, y'all can't do it by yourself. Right now, currently, fifty percent or less of our students test as kindergarten-ready. This work will get us, our first goal is to get a hundred percent kindergarten-ready, which would make a transformative difference. You can ask any teacher, any superintendent, any leader in our system. You bring a hundred percent kids ready to learn into the district, it's transformative. It's putting all the networks together, things like Mr. Mitchell's tutoring. I mean, we've got fabulous things going in our community, but we need to line them up so we know what's working, so we can have more visibility, we can amplify that message, and make sure that everybody is aware. We're asking for a hundred thousand dollars from the district to help with the initial, this is a one-time capacity, so that we will then be ready to get the work off the ground, which positions us for other funding from state and government and other foundations.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Sykes?
Yeah, so is this like, um, more like a feasibility assessment? Is this kind of just like a resource assessment to see?
Sure.
Okay, like the hundred thousand?
Yeah, so first of all, let me just tell you, we are part of, are working with a national network called Strive Network, which bases its work around the country, and, and we're, they don't tell us what to do, but it's taking best practices around collective action communities, where it's been very successful. I'll tell you, Spartanburg, South Carolina, for example, is doing this kind of work, and bigger, and huge success. So we have some great frameworks, which is, at the Ed Foundation, what we do is, we spend time researching, we'll spend a couple of years just looking at the best practice and all the ways we should do it right, before we're gonna even step out there. So we've already done an asset map of the entire, um, community, and also putting in state all those pieces. So we've got that framework already ready to go. We're gonna be working with Parker, the Public Affairs Research Council of Alabama, to help develop and provide all the documentation and the alignment of data, so that again, this isn't a hit or miss. We're gonna know what we're doing, we're going to know how much we're doing, how well we're doing it, and what difference we're making, and where we need to tweak. Because this is a long haul, this is not a one-month effort or one-year effort.
Okay, any other question? Thank you, Ms. Sykes.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our ask is for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I'm sorry, thank you.
We heard the one hundred. No, you're good.
Can I ask one quick question? Uh, when, when are you trying to implement this? I'm sorry, Mr. President.
Go ahead.
We're already off the ground, Ms. Johnson, as far as, was it you had the question?
No, I did.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Beard.
Okay.
We're already off the ground, again, with Ms. Owens, and we have, um, the community, we have these partnerships that we're starting, where we're gonna have actual community members, because the message has gotta be from the grandmother on the street, to the pastor in the pulpit, to the council and mayor here. We're already setting those meetings and bringing in coalition. I think we've got at least eight meetings over the next couple of weeks, as we're lining up all those coalition members, and then we'll start, a lot of this will be a messaging campaign also on top of this, and we've already got that contract underway, um, to, to work the whole messaging piece.
Can you include us when your meetings are gonna happen?
Absolutely.
So if you'll send us the dates, I'd like to attend a couple, please. Thank you.
Would be delighted to. Thank you.
And Eddie, is there, is this something that y'all are discussing in terms of moving resources, or remaining ARPA funds? Uh, no?
No, this is something that's not in the budget nor in ARPA funding as well.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Mr. Mitchell?
I think two organizations, I have already gave to for my, towards my, um, nonprofit organization. Um, I love BOL, and I've been working with Ms. Sykes, so these are some good nonprofits that's actually doing the work. Thank you so much.
The more the merrier. We want to amplify and promote all that work and get it where it needs to be. And all those ARPA funds and NASSR funds are gone, we need, there's gonna be a lot of gaps in the community, um, that we're gonna need to underpin and make sure they're getting seen, so, thank you.
Thank you again. Ms. Bergen Crenshaw, Montgomery Community Foundation.
Uh, Mr. President, as she's coming up, our council has passed, uh, across the, um, fund grant requests, and, uh, Burton's gonna, Ms. Crenshaw is gonna go through this with us, but, um, I pass it out for you all to have it in front of you as she goes through it. And this was from our council grant fund that we sent over.
Good afternoon. So these are applications that have been submitted through us for your contingency funds. They started back in the early summer, late spring. Some of these programs probably have already happened, but these are the organizations that were able to provide the documents that are needed to be a vendor for the city of Montgomery. There were many applicants who could not provide all those documents, so those were not even reviewed by our, our group. We did work with every organization that did apply to help them understand what those documents were, that maybe they did have them, but they, we only tried to hold their hand for a little bit, and then we had to kinda let go. So you'll see what they're requesting, which district they're requesting from. Do you want me to go through each one, or do y'all?
We can read.
Okay, I figured you could. I didn't think you wanted me to. That's why I wasn't doing it. I was giving you an overview. Um, you know, how much they're requesting, what district. The request did not always, um, say, if it was multiple districts, it did not always ask for if it was a different amount from each district, or if it was to be split. So what we're giving you is what we were able to get from them. So you'll see, um, a description of what they're asking for, and any reviewer comments and recommendations.
All right. Any question, Ms. Crenshaw?
Uh, quick question. Are we, and Council Johnson, you can, I don't know if there's a way, but are we gonna track with, so what, what is the next step of the fulfillment process of this, in how you kinda envision this? Because this is very helpful, but I think one of the things that, you know, I see, like, you and I have been asked for a couple of things, so is it just in between us? Are we tracking, are we letting Burton and the CACF know if we actually give, I mean, I'm sure you'd wanna know that data, wouldn't you, if we actually contribute to these things, or?
Well, the funding, uh, go, because we gave her the funding, counselor, so we would let her know which ones we wanna do. Um, through, after we review it together, we'll, um, say, okay, we, we'll fund this one with the amount of money that we sent over, but, um, I guess we'll be really strategic with it. So that way, because we did, what, about three or four grants, um, workshops?
We actually are not holding any of the funds.
Oh, you didn't hold it, okay. So we just put it in a separate account. Okay, so...
It's gonna be either a regular contingency allocation, where you'll vote on it, or rental, the same process, it'll just be sheets, uh, she's assessed them for you.
Okay.
But now the same process will apply for the allocations.
Okay, okay, that's easy question.
And if there's any documents that, if they're not already a vendor of the city, and they've come through our process, then we will give Brenda all the documents that are necessary.
Thank you.
Because we won't even review them if they're not all, if all the documents aren't there, which is, um, business license or an exemption, five oh one C three, IRS five oh one C three letter, a W N nine?
E I N.
And the E I, all that. Um, and then there's the mayor's minority questionnaire that he has requested.
Okay. I, I just wanna make sure there's a way for us to document whether or not we actually
Gave it up.
Contribute to these, because it's coming out of our own.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, you still, I mean, we, we're just, you know, giving this, and, um, but, you know, there have been some occasions where, um, Brenda or someone in her office has called us to ask what we have on certain organizations, if we have the documents, if they've applied, all of that. There have been a few organizations that I have talked to y'all individually about, that maybe you contacted me, asking if they have, and giving that kind of feedback. Um, but the only ones on this list are the ones that one hundred percent provided the documents that are needed.
All right.
Thank you.
You know, of course, Ms. Crenshaw, I have a question.
Yes.
I know a couple of years ago, we did something on the homeless campaign with the signs, and I know there was issues with not a lot of people applying. Do we still have a balance on that account?
We still do, but we are awarding, we're still taking in applications, and we are still awarding some money out from that. I can't give you the exact balance.
Okay.
Um, we have one that just got approved to be awarded, but they don't know it yet, so I can't announce it here.
Okay, all right.
Um, but we have been awarding money out.
Okay, thank you.
There was one organization that did have to pay their money back, though, because they were not able to use what they received it for.
Okay, thank you. Any other question? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anything else from the council?
Um, Mr. President.
All right, ladies first.
Thank you. Mr. President, um, since we just finished with, um, completed the Burton's review, I wanted to go ahead, because we did like, uh, I wanna say, three workshops preparing for that, and as we can see, people are still, nonprofits are still not prepared to do what they need to do in order to get funding. And what I found is, even though we had this process set up, we still received requests in our email, or, uh, through phone call, or through mail. So that way, it's almost like they were skating past the vetting process. And so we're hosting, um, in, in conjunction with, uh, the Community Development Department, I'm hosting a grants workshop for nonprofits on October ninth, and, uh, lunch will be provided, it'll be for one hour at twenty-five Washington. Um, I ask that people come out today. Um, again, another opportunity to learn as a nonprofit how to apply for grants properly, because even though they missed that vetting process, if they ask us for the funds and the paperwork is not done, they still won't get the money. So i- it's, it's like they're just trying to pass through to get these dollars, and as we can see through the reviews, they don't even look at the budget and see what they need, it's, it's like they're just requesting money, to just be requesting money for their operating or personal expenses. So, um, that, that's one thing that I wanted to mention, um, while we're in here, work session, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Ms. Mitchell?
And, Mr. President, I know we were kinda, I guess, I hope Jeremy Rea can answer this. Um, we was kinda waiting on the county to sign, um, some document to send us over matching money, and I just wanted to make sure that we are not waiting, and, because they might wait until the ninth hour, are we not moving forward with, um, awarding those individuals with that, that, uh, that money that we was allocating, so we can go ahead and get started with our, um, violence and prevention stages? Or are we gonna just wait until the county decides before we move forward allocating that money to those individuals?
We do have a plan to allocate those dollars, whether, we're not waiting on the county to short answer.
Thank you, sir.
All right. All right, at this time, Mr. Robert Smith from City Planning will come, uh, in the request of Council District Seven, to talk about the downtown wayfinding signage environment projects.
Did you say, what'd you say, Mr. President?
Good afternoon, council. I won't, um, uh, spend a whole lot of time, because I know you wanna move on so you can get ready for your five o'clock meeting, but, uh, Councilman Zemansky asked for an update on the downtown Montgomery wayfinding project, and so, uh, put together just a short presentation that we wanted to go, go through. Um, the, the first map, um, just really is an overall map, just showing, uh, large destinations where people may be coming from, um, to Montgomery, uh, in particularly, uh, downtown, because of, uh, multiple reasons. Next slide. And the next series of maps, um, are, are just , uh, maps showing, uh, destinations in downtown. Uh, next one. Again, another more detailed map showing destinations in downtown Montgomery. Next map. Circulation map, um, traffic, um, flowing, um, to I sixty-five and I eighty-five circulation analysis. Next map. Uh, the next two pages are just detailed information, um, for, uh, different destinations within downtown, and then on some areas that are, um, adjacent to downtown immediately, and then we go right into the actual wayfinding, uh, options. Uh, we've got a total of five options, and we'll go, go back up to the very first one. So that first one is, uh, option A, um, basically showing, again, these are both vehicular, uh, signage, as well as, uh, pedestrian signage, that is option A. We'll go to option B. Option B. Light brown, the first one was white, um, on the, on the circle M concept. Option C. Option C is just, uh, the circle M concept on the band, um, literally pressed onto the actual, um, uh, band of the sign. Next option, option D. Again, um, this one is, uh, um, again, circle M concept with the circle M on the very bottom portion of the sign. Uh, next option, and this is the last option, option E, um, showing that, um, on the very top of the band of the wayfinding sign. And the next series of, um, slides or signage locations and messages, um, there are, there will be about seven hundred, um, of these wayfinding signs, and these are the different messages that are just basically on each one of the signs throughout downtown Montgomery, and on the, the fringes, um, on, on the outside, just on the outside of downtown. And I, I won't go through each one of those, but there are a total of seven hundred. Keep going, keep going, keep going, keep going. Lot of them. And thi- this map right here, the next series of maps are just the locations for each one of those, uh, particular, uh, signs, uh, all seven hundred, uh, throughout downtown. Keep going, keep going, keep going. Keep going, keep going. Again, just showing you where those signs are in black. And the last slide is, uh, the project schedule and budget. Uh, again, this is, uh, phase one of the overall project, and this is based on vehicular and pedestrian signage. Um, the proposed implementation, uh, schedule assumes that all of the funds are secured, so, again, we're, um, uh, waiting on a mayor's decision that we'll get sometime. Um, um, we're, we're now in October now, so, uh, that's the first step. Next step will be to complete the bid documents, um, on November nineteenth, advertise for those bids, uh, November twenty-sixth, open those bids in January of twenty-twenty-five, uh, route that contract for approval on, uh, January twenty-sixth, uh, hopefully receive the approved contract, um, back on February twenty-seventh, issue that notice to proceed March third, twenty-twenty-five, and, uh, start construction, and will be substantially completed by July twenty-first of twenty-twenty-five. And the estimated cost is four point three million dollars. And again, this is just phase one of the overall wayfinding gateway enhancements and entry point signage. So that, there will, there, there is a separate presentation where we can go through and talk about each one of the gateway enhancement locations, as well as the entry point signage as well. And, and they have costs, so, cost estimates associated with those. I mean, as, as you can see, uh, it's not cheap, but very much so well-needed. So these, if, if and when they are implemented, will replace all existing wayfinding signage, uh, that we have in downtown Montgomery, and add new locations to, to cover all of the new destinations that we have. Yes, ma'am. I see you. Yes, ma'am, I see you smiling.
I am, thank you, Mr. Smith. But, uh, Mr. President, I, I gotta say it, I, I need for us counselors, if we're going to ask a question, for one, we all need to look at the district lines and know where our districts are, and if we wanna look at something in another district, because downtown is totality of District Three, if we want to know something in another district, you give that council member a professional courtesy, so they know, and they're aware, or they may could give you an update, councilor, but District Three is downtown, and I want, I don't know about nobody else, but I want a professional courtesy, at least, a phone call, because I'm always gonna do that. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Mr. President, just to, I mean, Ms. Johnson, just to let you know, what I had asked for, and I appreciate you saying that this is part of multiple phases, is the gateway assessment. I was specifically talking about Southern Boulevard, Fairview, which comes through District Seven, uh, Mulberry Street, and so I wanted to make sure that those were a part of this. I assume that this is, is the first phase, as you said, and then coming to the other ones.
Yes, this is phase one.
Yeah, no, and I think it's important, and, uh, you know, the, the idea that we'd be referencing gateways, I think it all kind of ties in pretty well together. We all know that downtown is the heartbeat of the city. I was just in, uh, you know, I was in Huntsville, Gadsden, Daphne, Farhope over the past week, and having cohesive waypoint signs, not just in downtown, but through, that's connected throughout the city, really helps move people when they're traveling. I know we all live here, and that we kind of understand where we're going, or where we're trying to go, so I look forward to seeing the next part of this, too, that is gateways, because, uh, it really expands the, the welcoming that we're gonna have for people that are not from the city of Montgomery, and make it easier to come and spend their dollars when they get here.
Yes, yes, sir. So I, I, I understood the last time that it was just all about the wayfinding, and so, um, at some point in time in the near future, we'll do the, the gateway enhancement piece, as well as the, uh, the entry point signage, and that there are nine locations for entry points coming into the city. Thank y'all.
All right, thank you. All right, anything else? In the joint, we will start the council meeting at five o'clock.